Right into the pledge of allegiance if you'd like to join us. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Good evening. We're gonna jump right into our meeting. We got a proven agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Absolutely.
Have a second?
Second.
Betsy, please.
Yep. Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yep.
Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes. Moving on to action items out of closed session. I believe we got some closed session minutes from April 24th, 2017. I think a motion to approve is presented. Have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Betsy, please.
Yes. Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes. Moving on, communications. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the school board on any agenda. Everybody get a chance to get a copy of the agenda. So if there's an item on here you'd like to address us on that's on this agenda, now is an opportunity for you to stand up and state your name. And if you could, limit it to five minutes, please.
Steve?
Yeah? Before you all start, I've been over on that side, and I just want to clarify. When we don't say anything, it's because we have to speak as a board. We're not gonna answer. You can't. So it's not that we don't care.
Yeah, but we want to hear what you got to say.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Amy Fiyash, and I teach English at the high school.
And I'm Pam Behr, so I teach English at the high school as well. I'm gonna go ahead and start. We're here to address... Glasses. The item agenda of an involuntary transfer of a GHS English teacher to GMS. I've been in the district 28 years, and sent 19 at the middle school, nine at the high school. Five of those were building programs like freshman advantage, RTI, PDIS, intervention classes, ELL curriculum. And I know when the budget cuts came through, we wiped all that out, and that was really disheartening. But it had to happen, and I know it forced the district, they felt financially forced to make cutbacks to their bones. So the last two years, I've returned to the classroom where it seemed logical, having just come from an intervention position, to be assigned to some of the standard level classes with struggling ELL students who I have been helping. What did not seem logical was that the standard level classes, which have for the past three decades been capped to 15 students and assigned a co-teacher. They had literally doubled in number. These classes are for students who are working two to three years behind grade level due to learning disabilities, skill deficiencies, or language barriers. In addition to academic deficits, most have motivational issues, and many have significant behavior and/or social-emotional issues. Jim Lee has requested an additional English teacher for two years now, and I know this is true because I called Steve Cobb last summer to verify that that request had actually made it up to the board. I know sometimes things get lost in translation, going from a building principal up to the DO, up to the board, et cetera. And so that need made it. And for two years, we've been told that the district cannot hire another English teacher. Recently, we decided as a department that we can no longer allow 30 standard students into one class. It simply is not what is best for students. To split those classes means that we are choosing to add additional students to all our other classes. This means that many classes will be starting at 30. Now, these numbers are really easy to look at and discuss without actually comprehending, so I want to break it down a bit for you. If each class has six more students in it, that doesn't seem too impossible. If a teacher adds, though, two minutes per extra student for grading an assignment, that's 12 extra minutes of grading, five classes. So that totals 60 minutes. And that's 60 minutes of grading one assignment. That's not 60 minutes of grading one assignment, that's 60 extra minutes that we're adding. Consider how many assignments you might have in a week. Three assignments would equal three extra hours of grading per week on top of the hours she already spends. Extra students also require extra parent contacts, extra discipline referrals, extra connections to attempt to make, et cetera. However, our department, facing what we felt was the lesser of two evils, agreed to take on all this extra next year for the good of the students, even though at some point, all this extra just breaks a person's back and speeds up teacher burnout. Not only do overloaded classes affect the teachers, but they also negatively impact students. Teachers, out of necessity, aren't able to assign as many writing pieces, and therefore the opportunities to improve students' writing skills are reduced. Teachers are not able to return comments on writing as quickly, which makes feedback less meaningful for the students. And in today's technologically advanced world, oral and written communication skills are more important than ever. Student-teacher contacts, class discussion and participation, and personal connections are all made more difficult. These vital interactions are proven to enhance motivation and effort, which in turn fosters growth and learning. We want to maintain the reputation of GHS graduates as leaders in their chosen colleges and professions. I'm here tonight because Mr. Lee has requested an additional English teacher for the last two years, and the board's response for next year, it seems to be to cut another English teacher. If the board approves the involuntary transfer tonight, a very strong message is being sent to our department. I hope the board realizes not only how negative that message is, but how personal it is as well. After all, our profession isn't about money or prestige. It's a personal investment we teachers make in our students. We think it really matters. Do you? And then we have a chart here, basically, that with the new proposal, our English teacher-student ratio will be worse than any Springfield school. It'll be worse than Stevenson High School and O'Fallon High School. And then numbers with just our building departments. In science, it's a class you only have to have two years of. We have 12 regular, this year, we have 12 regular ed teachers, science teachers, to teach two required years of science. Math, three required years. We have 12 teachers. We do not think those are overstaffed at all. Those are adequately staffed. What we're saying is, English, who has four years of an English requirement, we have 11.2 teachers, less than the other two departments, you know, when you do the math. So we are opposing losing another teacher and the involuntary transfer.
I just want to add to, then Pam said that, you know, we have had administrative support in our building, and we have. I mean, I truly believe that our administrators have tried to help us. And so I don't know where the disconnect is. But from my personal experience this year, I started with 28 standard freshmen, and 10 had IAPs, two were ELL, one was a junior, one was a struggling sophomore. I had four or five on my child find form, which means I wanted those additional students to be considered for emotional and academic screening. And it speaks back to that standard level class, that those kids would benefit so much more if they were in a smaller setting. I feel the larger number of struggling students in that course made it extremely challenging to make and keep connections with those most at-risk people in my day. And in the end, I feel I did a disservice to them with their writing skills and just their overall coming out of there. I would have liked to make more connections and taken them further. The same group is scheduled to be together next year. And it makes me very sad that we can't figure out a way to keep that teacher and try to keep those numbers, get those numbers at a manageable, doable thing in our day. So again, if the board does approve this involuntary transfer, reduce the number of English teachers, and we'll continue to fight this uphill battle in reaching the students who most need our instruction. I thank you for your time respectfully.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Amy, Pam, Betsy.
Mm-hmm. There's Cobb.
Okay. Anybody else have something they'd like to address the board on agenda?
Good evening. I'm Allison McHugh, a teacher at Glenwood Elementary and a parent of three children in this fabulous district. I would like to first thank you, Dr. Wood, for listening to our concerns at GES and all the elementary buildings. You've only been here for a short two years, and we feel you've truly listened and worked hard on this difficult task of putting all the pieces of this puzzle together to make the decision that will benefit the children in our Ball Chatham district. I would also like to personally thank Steve Cobb, who came to visit our school last year to talk to a few of our staff and to see some of our concerns that we've had about our school day hours. Thank you all for the time that you've taken to see and understand our concerns, and as a team, propose a solution in the best interest of our students. I have a unique perspective on the school day hours in our district. I'm an educator here, as well as a parent of three children in the district. I have a high school student, a junior high student, and an elementary student. And as a parent, I feel my older children definitely benefit from a later start. They both are involved in activities and sports at school. However, their education is our first priority. We see these activities that require later nights. It's very important that they still get the sleep that they need. My older two children have more homework than my elementary child and stay up later getting it done. It is our choice that our children participate in these activities, but even without them, research shows children between the ages of 13 and 18 actually tend better when having a later start time. My third-grade son gets up much earlier than the other two and actually likes to come to school with me at 7:30, even though his school day does not begin until 8:30. Both of my boys have experienced a later start day at GES, and I feel it has been more difficult for them to attend to what is being taught past 3:00 p.m. in their elementary years. As an educator of 22 years and a leader in this district, I feel confident in discussing what is best for our elementary children. The school day time at Glenwood Elementary that differs from the other elementary schools does not only directly impact student learning, but professional collaboration between the elementary schools, which indirectly impacts student instruction. Our district has prided itself on making sure our elementary students have the same learning opportunities regardless of the elementary school that they attend. Having three elementary schools means we need time to work together to ensure that all students in our district are getting the same education. I've served on many curriculum and leadership committees, and have never been more frustrated with collaboration than I have the last six years. With the new standards being implemented during this timeframe, the three elementary buildings were to meet, to develop curriculum, and make sure that each standard was not only taught, but to the highest standard that we have here at the Ball Chatham district. With the different school hours, our collaboration time is very limited. We have had to use professional days so that we have common time, but this takes us out of our classrooms. We all know that's not what's best for children, board fiscally responsible for the district. Beginning and our ending our day with the other elementary schools is crucial for collaboration, in which in turn benefits all children in our district. Teaching kindergarten is something that I love. Keeping them motivated and focused beyond 3:00 p.m. is very difficult. Children at the elementary level are so much more ready to learn and focused in their early day hours. Again, valid and reliable research shows, excuse me, that this to be true. I personally have children each day tell me they're ready to go home at 2:45. We've tried putting many different subjects at the end of the day for the last six years, but no matter what it is, or how hard we try, we're not getting the most out of our students. Along with motivating these children to continue to learn at the end of the day, our students spend what could be precious teaching time waiting for our buses. Although the fix for this year has helped, we still have many children sitting in classrooms or hallways waiting for the bus. We have one bus that makes two trips to our school. Aligning all the elementary school day time is what's best for our children, social, emotionally, and academically. It's best for the whole child. And again, I thank you for your research, collaboration, and time that you've put into this solution.
Allison, Pam. Okay, anybody else? Yes, go ahead.
My name is Michelle Reyer, and I have three children in a school district. Speaking to the issue that Allison brought up, I want to address that as well. This morning, I sent an email to the school board, so I'd like to read it to this board. This issue was brought to my attention on Friday, May 19, 2017, by a proactive parent who posted to social media Dr. Wood's memo regarding the proposed changes for school times. After reading the memo, I had many concerns. Dr. Wood is correct in that he states that there is no one simple fix toward solving this issue. He further states that after many meetings and discussions, and when considering all factors, the proposed option presented to the board is the best. I would like to know what consideration has been given to the following: student athletes. What consideration will be given to the schedules for student athletes so that less class time will be missed? When in sixth grade, as a cross-country runner, my son had to miss his math honors class a few times due to bus travel time to get to the meets. The proposed release times may possibly increase the amount of class time that will be missed, as we are talking about a 40-minute difference for GHS. Has the potential time missed been quantified by sport? Dr. Wood indicates that early and late adolescent learners are more productive and attentive later in the morning and into the afternoon. And while I'm sure that there are studies to prove this, the reality is that the benefit is lost when the student has to stay up later or get up earlier in the morning to complete homework assignments or study for tests. Further, what actions have been taken thus far to the restructuring of the class schedules to assist our adolescent learners during their peak times? In addition, I have found that the older the student, the later the game times, which means my students aren't getting home until after 8:30 most evenings. And while my middle schooler and high schooler will have later start times, their younger sister will now have a 7:30 a.m. start time, and they will have to be up early to accommodate her change in schedule. Multiple kids in multiple schools is not just unique to my situation. The time change results in a net loss of time available for activities and sleep. Will the counselors work with the students to align their schedules so that class time missed is for subjects such as win, PE, or study call? Given the number of students in our district, the existing challenges of scheduling, and my children who participate in school, sports, and extracurricular activities, I'm very interested in what the solution to missed class time will be. This past school year, the decision to discontinue morning practices was made. In accordance, the athletic team set a jockey for limited after-school hours. In addition, the Chatham YBA also competes for gym time. And as an example of the stress this puts on teams, the sixth-grade boys' basketball team had to practice at the home of a parent who fortunately had a personal facility the team could use. Is there consideration for bringing back morning practices? Fall outdoor sports compete with daylight. Will one sport be given priority over another? Increased traffic. If approved, GIS and GMS will have the same school hours. If you have driven to either one of these schools in the morning, then you know that school traffic currently competes with work traffic and Ball Elementary. This is already a somewhat hazardous experience trying to make a left turn out of GIS. Has a study been done to determine the effect of the later school times on traffic patterns? Do you know the number of parent drivers versus students who ride the bus to these schools? Will you be surveying parents to see if time changes increase or decrease bus riders? Financial burden. For some members in our community, the change in school times will create a financial burden, as they will incur an extra cost in daycare or babysitting. This change could affect our lower-income families. Parents often depend on their high schoolers to watch younger siblings or babysit younger children who are released earlier. Students who have part-time jobs after school may be contributing to their family's financial well-being. There is a potential loss of part-time jobs or later working hours for our high school students. Eighth-grade foreign language. Currently, the eighth graders taking a foreign language attend the class first hour at the high school. Will foreign language teachers be traveling or available onsite at GMS, or what is the proposed scheduling for these students? Other questions and concerns that I listed are: Dr. Wood states that staff members will be able to significantly improve collaboration and planning across the curriculum and grade levels. Please provide justification for this statement. I want to know that the changes being made are in the best interest of my children. Further, I want to have alternatives defined. Will the teacher's proposal for this significant improvement be shared with the public? If this is so beneficial to our students, this may interest our parents as well. What is the planned schedule for this collaboration among the three elementary schools for the 174 attendance days? If there is no proposed schedule, what is the intent, for example, weekly, monthly, et cetera? How many minutes are required to align the curriculum? My thought is, that would be a priority before the school year starts. The 2017-18 student calendar indicates that there are four Teacher Institute days scheduled, two prior to the start of school in August, and the other two during school. No kids, no buses these days. Do all the elementary schools start at the same time on these days for collaboration? Is it possible to expand the school year to allow the teachers additional Institute days? I recognize that our teachers put a lot of personal time into their jobs. However, their meeting time should not adversely affect our families and our students. Dr. Wood states that supervision is an issue. To accommodate GES, which is one school, the proposal requires GIS and GHS to adjust their start times as well due to the busing issue. Has this change created a larger supervision issue, especially given that high schoolers may no longer be able to assist with watching younger children? In addition, it would also be helpful to know the proposed times that students can be dropped off. By no means is this a comprehensive listing of the issues that will affect our parents and students. Dr. Wood's memo only lists three specific areas the proposed times would impact. And while I understand that it is impossible for him to list out all the factors in his memo, it does not appear to me that this proposed change in school times took into any consideration any input by other major stockholders, such as parents and students. I apologize if my assumption is incorrect, and there was a committee made up of parents, teachers, and students who are allowed to weigh in on this issue. It is surprising to me that this issue, which directly affects the parents, is up for a vote tonight with no notice, such as skyward, email, or letter, being sent to parents or other affected members of the community. The only place that I'm aware of this memo exists is on the website. The impact of changes in school start time can be a profound issue, and families and students will experience a wide range of negative effects as a result of changes. Even for those families that will have little difficulty adjusting to the new schedule, I would imagine that there will be advantages and disadvantages for them as well. However, I'm not aware that we were given the opportunity, except for tonight's board meeting, to express those specifically. In addition, how this decision was developed and will be ultimately implemented will have a substantial impact upon how the changes will be received by the families. I encourage you to look at the comments on Facebook. I've only found one parent in favor of this change. Obviously, ample warning would make it less difficult for us to make any necessary adjustments. In addition to those questions, I have a few more. Will the late start for the high school on Mondays be eliminated? Have collaboration technology and tools been looked at? With the right collaboration tool, teachers can all contribute to a discussion or even collaborate on a presentation or topic at their own leisure during the week. Why does collaboration have to require face-to-face meetings? If change is imminent, then our families deserve a well-thought-out plan communicated to them timely that addresses these issues. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you. Anybody else?
May I make just one clarification, and that is that on our agenda for the item at hand, it says, "Discussion of school time changes for 17, 18 school year." That means it's for discussion purposes only. We don't vote on it tonight. So I just wanted to correct that mention that you made for the vote tonight, because there will be no vote tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else? Got an agenda item they'd like to address the board on? This is an opportunity. There will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting on any item. But right now, if you've got something that you want to address the board on, an agenda item, this is your opportunity. Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to five consent agenda items. We've got five one to five 11. Any wish to pull any of them?
I'd like to pull five 11, please.
Anybody else? And I need a motion to approve five one to five 10 is presented. Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes. Okay, five 11.
Okay, five 11 on the issue of the waiver for show choir. The latest information that I understood was that the General Assembly basically chose not to continue the waiver for show choir as if it was physical education. And that was the law. And my understanding was that basically we were going to abide by that. But has there been a change that has prompted your now recommendate, you know, that basically has a law changed? Has the understanding of the law changed?
We have a teacher record that they participate in, so it is considered physical education. Is that correct, Jim?
Oh, yeah. Okay, thanks, Jim.
No, this is not a waiver. We're not using the waiver.
Okay.
We are, we have had, we are in contact with ISBE. We're in contact with ISBE Legal Counsel.
Okay.
We are just moving show choir within the PE realm in terms of our coursebook, and we are tying two teachers to it. The show choir teacher, as well as the PE teacher, will be the teacher of record for the class. And we also contacted several schools who we know are still allowing show choir as a PE waiver.
Okay.
You know, probably the main thing you need to know, that the students in that class are probably more active than...
Oh, I know that. I've seen their performances. Right.
But yes, it's, we're literally moving it to another course area and making PE teacher the teacher of record.
So, okay, does that, how does that change the high school course curriculum requirements? Does it change it at all by moving it into the physical education department?
No, not at all.
Okay.
They'll still have to do, you know, the State Institute, some what they call enhanced PE, where we have to test kids every year at different grade levels at high school and sophomores. Those students will still have to participate in that, where they do different things like sit-ups and...
Oh, okay. Okay.
They're one day away from dancing and do quicker.
And so basically, show choir just uses one period per day? Or, okay, just one period per day?
Every day.
So is the physical education teacher going to participate in their routines also?
No. Well, we do the enhanced PE, they will. Absolutely. Now, if I can get them there to dance, I'd like to see that.
Okay. Okay, well, I just wanted to know about, I just wanted to know how the district was planning to handle the mechanics.
Yeah, we're not using the waiver at all.
Okay.
So I could see this as a slippery slope, where do you stop, or an advantage for like cheerleading, band, dance team. Where do we start? Where do we stop? I guess...
All who already can waiver out of PE.
Oh, they can.
That's all right.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Oh, excuse me. I'm glad ISBE Legal has been involved in this, Jim, because then we have, we can turn to them.
The Ranger's quite hilarious actor, but I won't bring that, I won't mention it here.
Okay. Thank you.
So, do I have a motion on five 11? Have a second? Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yes. Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes. Okay, moving on to personnel consent items. We've got six one to six 30. Does anybody wish to pull any of them?
Can we go ahead and pull six two four, just for clarification on the involuntary transfer?
We're gonna pull six 24. Any others?
I'd like to pull six point two five.
Organizational chart changes. Any others? No, hearing none. Then do I have a motion to approve six one to six 23 and six 26 to six 30 is presented. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yes. Yuravich?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes. Okay, six 24, building transfer.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Cup.
Yes. Okay, six twenty-four building transfers for seventeen eighteen.
I just thought it would be -- it might be a good thing for administration, just to kind of go over the logic behind those, just to help verify before we make that decision. If that's okay.
I don't have enrollment numbers.
Yeah, she was prepared, doesn't have enrollment numbers.
What was that, Jen?
I don't have enrollment numbers in front of me by section. I don't have any of that with me. I wasn't prepared for it.
Can we pull that till next month?
I feel comfortable addressing it next month. Because I think the -- I think some very valid points have been brought up. I mean, Jen, I'm just suggest -- for me, I would feel comfortable pulling it this month and just having all of the information presented.
I can trade in all my numbers for that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean--
Just don't have the numbers.
No, that's fine. I mean--
This isn't urgent or anything, is it? Like, we can wait a month, right?
Teachers leave Thursday.
Yeah.
They're gonna find out in the end of June if they haven't given a assignment.
All we could do is--
They gotta know if they're gonna start preparing for one course then in mid-summer.
And then adjust if we need to.
Well, should we discuss -- should we have a discussion now? Because actually, I mean--
Yeah, we just don't have the numbers.
Is it all based on enrollment numbers only?
I don't even know--
I mean, we have the numbers.
I just have to develop.
I'm sorry. What'd you say, Jen?
I don't even have the numbers of the number of sections that they were recruiting the AHS landed on when they were talking about changing, having their other sections grow to support a lower number. I don't even know what they decided. I don't have that. Do you have that?
No. Still trying to figure out. Get a hold of change.
Well, we'll have another meeting here. Can we approve it with -- and just pull that one teacher? That way, the rest of them can move on, Jim. If that's what it's really about. Is it really about the one?
One English teacher.
At least the rest of them can plan.
I think that's the problem. Class size, you're talking a whole lot of sections. I mean, is the next teacher gonna -- I mean, this is a bit of a stuff in that next one English teacher, I guess is what I'm saying.
It is. I think we gotta -- I mean, pass it, then we can have that discussion.
Now, I mean, don't misunderstand me. I'm not pulling it out of a distrust thing. It's more of a -- it sounds like people would like some clarification as to why that was made, and I trust all of you in administration right now in terms of what you're doing. There were seemingly valid points made, but you're right, if we don't have the information together--
Well, I mean, to put it in perspective, we also have twenty-eight fourth grade and twenty-sixth and first grade. We have large class sizes across the district.
So my question is, how many teachers should we add? Like fifty-five, Jen? Fifty-five teachers to get it down to--
Here's what we do. I mean, I would recommend we pass, and then if we need to look at that, we can have further discussion. But it's -- there's moving parts here. And I mean, in order for her to follow through on her curriculum plan, then we've got to be able to talk to individuals. A month in between is difficult. I'm sure we can talk afterwards, but we need to, I would think, in order to move forward, we've got to. But it's up to you.
Can you talk about--
No, I said what I would recommend. I mean, I think if we move forward on it, and then if we need to have a conversation with Jen as well and with Jim, and have further discussion, make an adjustment later. But in terms of making recommendation, I think it would be prudent to do that so that we can notify individuals if we need to move them.
You can always transfer back.
Right.
At the next month.
Right.
We can always what?
Transfer back.
For that one individual, though, is that any less inconvenient? I mean, if they're transferring one place, then transferring it back?
Well, it has to be -- we have to -- this has to be addressed soon.
Right.
I mean, you can't wait until June four--
Well, we didn't -- that's what I'm saying. I mean--
Yeah.
We didn't have a discussion prior to--
It came out Friday.
Right.
Anyway, we just knew--
No, we do have a meeting Wednesday night, but we're already -- I mean, we'd have to do -- we have to do open session after really late.
And we got a meeting June eighth, too.
We have a meeting June eighth.
Yeah. I mean, I would, like I said, I'm just saying, move forward, and if we need to adjust them, we can at that time.
Okay, so, but basically, I would, I mean, I could approve this merely on a contingent basis, that we get to look at--
Sure.
-- the numbers and--
Makes sense.
We are meeting June eighth. We definitely have a meeting scheduled, so could we get this--
Okay.
-- as an open item?
Yes.
There's only one other open item, so if we get this on as an open item.
I'd move forward on it.
I just want to clarify, is that meeting June eighth or June seventh? Just so we're all on the same page that we're talking about.
Or maybe we have--
Well, I just want everyone to be aware when--
We have to have that new board member seated.
I believe it's June seventh.
Yeah, right.
It is the seventh, because the eighth is the deadline.
So, June seventh.
But I'd move forward with it, and then we'll make adjustments. My only concern moving forward tonight is, then, I mean, we can pretend to listen. I'd like to really know if those numbers are accurate. Well, that's where Jen is gonna have that conversation.
Twenty-eight at-risk kids in one room was accurate, for sure.
What got me was the two years of science, and we have twelve teachers, and four years of English and eleven teachers. I'd like to know if that's accurate.
June?
I don't know. I'm sorry, what?
Science has different limitations to the--
And that, see, it sounds ominous, but I don't know what's required.
Yeah, you can't look at it the same.
Okay.
But we need the accurate numbers.
I'd move forward, and then we'd have a conversation afterwards. We have June eighth or June seventh. And if you need a transfer back, then you transfer back at that time. I mean, it's on camera.
Everybody comfortable with that? Amy and Pam, we're hearing you.
Yeah. I think that's a pertinent, really, and I hear you loud and clear, but there's a lot of moving parts, and I want to do its due diligence, and I want to have that conversation with Jen, and if we need to make an adjustment, then we'll do it. Fair enough?
So don't celebrate vacation until June eighth.
And we didn't mean anything by any other school or department or anything.
No.
Nothing against any others. I know science is not very--
So are you amending, then, the motion to say to approve building transfers contingent on further detail being received or something? Is that what I'm hearing you say, or?
I, well, I'm not making the motion, but I would recommend making the motion, moving forward with it, recommended, not saying contingent, but knowing that we're going to be having that conversation, where if we need to make an adjustment to move that person back, we would do it at that time.
The decision can be made to change.
Yes.
If--
Absolutely.
After information is--
I would like, maybe what we could, the motion could somehow reference, not, well, basically making reference to the final discussion and vote, well, would occur, the initial vote would be tonight, and a confirmation of tonight's vote would occur on June seventh. Does that sound right?
Well, I mean, you vote tonight, you make them to support the motion that's been made, and then review the data.
Okay.
And if it needs to be amended, then we come back during the seventh meeting and make the recommendation.
So are we going to review the data via email or in person?
In person, I mean, that's, I mean, Jen and--
Oh, so June seventh would be the date that we would review?
No, the review would take place before then. If we needed to make a change based on that data, June seventh would be the date at which we would make that motion.
So, okay, and that, that data is available for Amy to look at as well, and--
Yeah, Jim and--
The coordinators are involved a couple times, hasn't he?
Yep.
Okay, Jen, okay.
But the numbers fluctuate, you gotta understand that.
Okay.
Got that, Betsy?
So we're going to -- I think, I think what I'm hearing you say is that, we're gonna approve the motion as it stands, but that you will come back on the seventh with the data, the new data--
If the data supports it, then you make the recommendation at that time to change.
To change.
Yes.
So really, it's the same as what you see right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have a motion? Second.
Second.
Thanks. Betsy, please.
Yes. Brewer.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Siren.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Yes.
And Cup.
Yes. Six twenty-five organizational chart changes, Susan.
So, Jen, could you, looking at this organizational chart, can you just talk a little bit about how you have technology coordinators reporting to you?
Sure, that's instructional technology.
Yeah.
So it is not the technology coordinator that handles all of the hardware and fixing of the tech equipment. It's the instructional technology coordinator that is a coach for our teachers, how best to implement technology into the classroom.
Okay.
So it's actually a certified teacher with a tech endorsement. So they're a fully licensed teacher--
Okay.
--that has to have that tech endorsement to be able to lead and coach teachers on the technology.
And that's different than the instructional coaches per se, correct?
Correct. The instructional coaches is about, more about curriculum.
Right.
And that's all your content area.
Right.
They don't need that tech endorsement.
Okay.
Where that tech coach is really looking at, like I said, the integration of technology into the classroom, into the instruction, infusion into the curriculum, and they are actually going to spend a lot of time providing professional development and enhancing the skill sets of our instructional coaches to get back to our teachers.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any further discussion?
Second.
Good. Do I have a motion then to approve six twenty-five as presented?
I'll make that motion.
About a second.
Second.
Greg, thank you. Betsy, please.
Yes, Maddox.
Yes.
Siren.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
And then, or Cup.
Yes. Moving on to financial, we have a prevailing wage ordinance that we have to approve, Brandon.
Make you fit a line item, so I don't have to pull it.
The board is required annually to adopt a resolution recognizing prevailing wage rates and accepting those. I know this isn't one of your favorite resolutions to do. The intent is to level the playing field so that anybody putting a bid forward on any contract for the district agrees to pay prevailing wage. It prevents companies from coming in and trying to undercut other companies. It just puts them all on a level playing field.
Disagree, but that's okay.
Did you notice that Greg's name is misspelled? I don't know if that matters. On the first page?
I will correct that. So Greg, don't sign this one, and I'll correct that.
That means it was misspelled last year as well, because I, this is the same as last year, so, but I'll correct this year. Sorry, Greg.
He misspelled my daughter's beta club certificate, too. She wasn't together.
Are there any other questions?
Do I need to read this whole thing?
No. I don't think so. Betsy, does he need to read the whole thing? He does not.
All right, do I have a motion then to approve this resolution, according to how it's written, for the prevailing wage?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yes. Siren.
I abstain.
Okay. Morley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Maddox.
No.
And Cup.
Yes. All right, moving on, new business. Thank you, Charlotte, for that. New business, we got a VCE update, I believe Mr. Tim Schroeder's gonna address the board and give us some information.
And I, I'm Tim Schroeder. I serve as the president of the Volcham Educational Foundation. I appreciate everyone coming out to hear the update. I just assumed that was what the crowd was-- As you guys know, you guys are responsible for appointing the institutional directors. So at next month's meeting, we'll have that in front of you. But I thought I'd use this opportunity just to give you a quick update on what we've done over the last year. Our biggest event is still the Titan Truck. Last year, I think we had about three hundred and twenty or so adult runners and just under two hundred and fifty students that ran in a Titan truck, and that generated roughly in net of about twenty-eight thousand dollars for the district and the foundation. So that's still our biggest. We're trying to grow other things to even grow the revenue source, but that's, that's still the big one that we rely on most. The other thing we did this year is we started a raffle for a reason. And raffle for a reason actually just concluded a couple weeks ago, and that was the idea of Shelley Egan, or she came up with it, really as a way that the foundation could get more involved directly in the classrooms. We knew that a lot of teachers were spending a lot of their own money out of pocket to buy supplies and stuff for the classrooms, so we wanted to have a real quick and easy way that they could come to the foundation and request a small Wynn grant to benefit. And I think to date, we have awarded nineteen thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars in Wynn grants. So-- Good chunk of money. We've awarded grants for flexible seating in the classrooms, audiobooks, supplies and materials for classrooms, and replacing some outdated books and DVDs. I know we've touched every, every school, some more than others, and we're gonna continue to raise money so we can continue on with the Wynn grants. This was the first year we announced that at the kickoff meeting for the start of the school year, and we have a meeting tomorrow night, and I'm sure it's something we're gonna be continuing on with. So I would answer any questions if the board has any about what we've sort of been up to.
So how much did you make for the raffle?
The raffle for a reason? We, we made, well, when we put it together, we didn't know exactly what to expect. We thought, well, maybe we could raise a couple thousand dollars. We ended up actually raising gross was about forty-four hundred dollars.
Oh, wow.
And our expenses were minimal. We're talking a few hundred dollars. So we did away with the spring fundraiser, which we did a little bit, a little better on the gross side, but the expenses were so much higher, so the raffle for a reason was a nice replacement for that. And that's something we're gonna look at and try to do again next year. And all those proceeds go back into the Wynn grants. Anything else?
Thank you and your group for your time and effort. I know it's, it's unpaid. We know what that's like.
Yeah. We have a total that I'm sure we're going to go over tomorrow night.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, we haven't... Tomorrow night will be our first meeting since we had that.
I just wanted to thank Tim because, really, the association or the foundation, it's tremendous just sitting in there. I go to the board meetings, and it's always focused on what's best for kids. And we really appreciate our staff submitting those applications. We've seen a significant increase, and that money goes right back into the classroom. And really wonderful. So, I just want to extend a thank you to you. Thank you so much.
I'll echo that as well. I just would like to continue to suggest that we get the foundation as far away from this board as possible in terms of us appointing members and things like that. I know I've mentioned that before, just to try to keep as much of our potential politics out of the good work the foundation can do. I'm not saying we have any of that now, but the potential's always there. So, as far as we can keep the foundation away from us, the better. Not the school district, but from the board. So, I've always had a little issue with approving appointments to the foundation's board, because I don't think that's my place. But that's just my two cents.
Well, and I will comment on that real quickly. I think the one... I think when they established the foundation way before I was involved with it, I think they wanted to make sure that the foundation didn't mirror off in some direction that really ended up having nothing to do with the district. So, they wanted the board and the superintendent to be involved to make sure where we're headed is where we should be headed from the betterment of the district.
And our involvement is to appoint that. How many of your total members, hopes that...
We have 13 directors total. The board appoints five of them. And then, seven are community members, and then the superintendent gets a seat on there as well. So, the community side still has a majority, I guess. But I don't know. I think you could argue that both ways, Brandon, but it seems to work. I don't think there's been any issues. So, I'm not necessarily thinking it's something we need to change. Anything else? Well, the real reason I wanted to come in as well is to talk about the people we're going to appoint or reappoint, as it may. Members are elected for two-year terms, and we currently have a new VCEA representative. We like having the teachers involved because they really are eyes and ears into the classroom. Shelley Edner had served in that role a couple of different times. As you know, she's retiring at the end of this year. That opened up a slot. So, the VCEA nominated Tricia Langheim to take that spot. Tricia's actually a graduate, and she had moved away, came back, and last year, she started as a language arts teacher in the district. So, we're really excited to have her because of the community connection. And I think she's pretty wound up to be a part of it, too. You get to also reappoint me, if you choose, and Michelle Steckel. Michelle currently serves as our treasurer. She's an accountant in Springfield. And please reappoint her. We need somebody to be our treasurer. And then, the last one is, last year, Paul Scherchel was appointed to a community member. And after that took place, we realized he should have been, because his wife is a teacher in the district, he should have been appointed as an institutional member. So, what we're proposing is that we switch Paul's seat with Tom Skelly. Tom can be a community member, but Paul technically can't. So, that's sort of just a little housekeeping cleanup on our side, which is a mistake was made. So, that's it. That's my information.
Thanks. You're going to come to us in June for them?
We will have something in front of you in June at whatever meeting you want, the 7th of the regular one.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions for Tim?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for coming on.
All right. Moving on, new business. We got approval of the Ball Chatham Educational Support Professionals Association contract for 2016 to 2019. Need to approve.
I'll second that. Should we add MOUs to that?
Yeah, those are all.
It's all part of it.
Yeah, it's all part of it.
Okay.
Yep. Go ahead.
Very good. Worley?
Yes.
Yaravich?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. Support staff people, thank you for working with us. Okay, moving on. 8-3. First read of policies from the March 2017 press. Information only. They got any questions? I've read through them all. Approve them next month? Okay, that's information only. 8-4. Permission to post and request for purchase for 100 refurbished desktops. Josh?
Yeah, two things. One, it should, I guess, should have been request for proposal. Two, I want to... To start off, both of the topics I'm going to talk about right away, neither one, I'm asking for more money. This is, again, I know the board's asked that we be non-transparent as possible, going out for bid, putting things out when our purchases are going to exceed a certain amount out there. So, this is, I want to get your permission that these monies, again, has already been budgeted for both of these purchases through technology funds, just so that you guys are aware, though, that these are going to go out. The first one...
Can you get some of these refurbished computers from the state surplus? They've got a ton of them being sent there.
We could... Yeah, I'm open to CMS. I just know what... The one thing I don't want to run into...
Is old stuff.
Is old stuff. And if we have, let's say, we have so many throughout the district that needs requests. Basically, this year, I've started a rotation. This would take care of our three elementaries. So, we'd get all the elementaries done and on a rotation and on with the same machine. What I don't want to run into, I know with CMS, a lot of times, you'll get 20 of one, 25 of a different one. So, this way, at least, we're going to put it out. We want 100. They'll all be the same. I did do proposal instead of a bid, because I don't want to be locked into a certain model with technology. A lot of times, vendors will come and say, you know, we've already purchased so many, and they'll give you a better deal. So, if somebody... I'd like the Lenovo thing centered, but if somebody says, hey, we have a Dell that's just spec-wise match for match for this, but because we have so many, we're willing to give it to you at this amount, I want to leave that door open. So, I'd anticipate, I'd like to get this formally posted. We'll draw it up and put it on the board or on our website and talk with, send it out, let the vendors know it's out there, and be ready to purchase those in next month.
Still moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? Betsy, please.
Yes, Yaravich?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. Okay, 8-5. I got some Chromebooks.
Again, we would basically reallocate in some of the tech line money that we've already have in our budget. We have several hundred Chromebooks throughout the district that are the Samsung 303 models that were the first models that the district bought over six years ago, right around six years. Those are marked for end of life by Google come September of this coming year. And not to mention, they've just over six years, of course, have... Are starting to wear and tear. Batteries aren't charging. Mousepads aren't working, things like that. Keys are falling off. We have such a huge buy-in from the staff right now and the students using the Chromebooks. I don't want to see us going next year with, again, Google marking these for end of life come September, and all of a sudden, we've got to go back to the teachers and say, hey, it's great that you've started using these, but we don't have anything for you to work with now. So, 600 was a good number, just from using, estimating in my head what the budget is going to be as far as the numbers or the bids that these are going to come in at. 600 would give me a good amount to play with as far as even just even 100 per building would alleviate a lot of stress that these have on them right now and the buildings. Go ahead, Greg.
Are you still thinking about one-to-one? And how far are we from that number for one-to-one?
I think that's the direction we need to go. I'd still proposal. I think the strategic planning session that we have, I think we'd be a good idea to see what thoughts come out of there. I absolutely am a factor of it. I mean, we could put it out as a one-to-one. Whenever I first started doing these numbers, I thought, well, ideally, in my head, on a one-to-one rotation, you'd buy 800 a year. You're seventh grade and sophomore. If we're not ready to make that leap quite yet, we're going to have to do something. This isn't going to be money that is a waste either, because, I mean, we're even seeing at the second grade level using these now. So, if we bought these, there's always going to be use for these.
When you buy them in bulk like this, what's your unit cost per machine? Or what are you roughing at?
Roughly, it's just going to depend. You're looking at... You're going to be under $200. I'd say for a machine, you're looking at $167, the last bid I seen. I would want to approach this, too, as far as if... I want to make some calls to see if we up that any, would it decrease or give us a better discount? Because we have had some initial talks. Would it be worth bringing other districts in on this purchase? And we've had a monthly meeting, and some districts said, well, if you're buying 600, we're buying 400.
If you can leverage your purchase, that's great.
Exactly. Now, with Chromebooks, they are on the rise as far as price, just because they're in such high demand in the education. I don't know, but I think it's worth us looking into that option for sure.
So, there's nothing worse than a computer that doesn't work. I understand that. My question is more, when they say end of life, is that like a car's at $100,000, but we know it'll go further? You're taking a chance?
You're rolling dice. So, we could go all the next year and they work, or come September, if some update comes out. And once it's end of life for Google, they're no longer going to support it, basically. They're not going to push updates to it to support that device. So, they could, like I said, they could work all next year, or they could come September, and let's say, Google puts something out that you have to have the latest version of Chrome, and you go to update it and say, your device isn't any longer supported. Now, we're going to ride out. We're going to keep using the ones we have, too. I mean...
If they keep working, you...
If they keep working, we still, I mean, have such a huge shortage at the high school level, anyway. Having them, if they work, is going to be matter of nothing. So, we're going to keep them.
Still moved?
Any other questions for Josh? Okay, we got a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yes, Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yaravich?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes. Josh, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Okay, moving on. We got 8-6. Discussion of school time changes for 17, 18 school year.
Hi, um...
So, how did we get here?
Yeah, how'd we get here? We got here because we wanted to, you know, when I first arrived here as a superintendent, I would say 10 days into my arrival, this was probably one of the top two issues that hit my desk. And, you know, I spoke with the teachers and administration, and we talked about how can we, can we fix it right away? Well, being new, you don't have enough knowledge and understanding really to how it all, all the puzzle pieces fit. So, we looked at how we could temporarily adjust to accommodate some of the needs that the teachers and the school had, both from a planning standpoint, from a supervision standpoint. One of the things that a lot of, you know, if you're not in the school business, you wouldn't necessarily think down this path, school transportation buses play such a significant role in all of this. And there is. There's no simple fix, zero. It's really trying, it's a balancing act. And that's why social media is a wonderful thing. It's funny. I, you know, that's why it's a discussion item. It's, you know, the board doesn't act on it. It's a way to get the conversation started, because it is something that has to be addressed in this district. There's, it's unfair from the standpoint of equity in regards to the elementary districts, the planning that occurs. You know, you talk about professional development. You talk about the PLCs. Those types of things are very important for our teachers, and they clearly communicated that. So much so that as this year progressed, the association wanted to meet again and brought this topic to us and said, you know, do we have a firm resolution? Can we move forward? Talking with our transportation director, you wouldn't necessarily think with curriculum and instruction and classrooms and students and all that, that that would be really one of the cornerstones of this issue, but it is. And so, I talked with Jim Lovelace and said, Jim, you know, what is the most feasible thing we can do? What's realistically a change that perhaps we could implement, knowing that we have six schools, a high school, of course, is the largest, and the elementaries, the middle school, intermediate are relatively similar in size in terms of student distribution? So, then it becomes a matter of, we really can't have two release and four release. We have 71, is that correct?
71 runs that we make.
71 runs that we make. And so, it's providing some balance in how we distribute those runs. So, we really looked at two or three different options. But there was an imbalance, and I said, well, what's the best one we could just get out there and talk about? Because we have to fix this issue. So, as we began talking about the issue, you get a little bit deeper into looking at what's best for students. I'm going to be very honest. My staff knows that. If it doesn't start with it's best for students, then we have to change the conversation. It's not about the adults. It's about the kids. And how can we best prepare them? And there are a lot of factors. Athletics and extracurricular, we understand that. So, getting this on the agenda wasn't a matter of, you know, anyone acting on it right away. It was to invite that input, to get some of that feedback. And we want it. We absolutely want that. But we had to start the conversation, because we do need to move in the direction. So, then you begin investigating. You know, look at what other schools do. Look what others. You know, we often compare ourselves to the Dunlamps of the world. Morton's another good barometer for comparison. Looking at what their day structures are like. Adelaide Stevenson High School, the number one public high school in the state of Illinois, phenomenal. Matter of fact, Rick DeFord, who was a friend of mine, was a principal there, did some wonderful things. And you start looking at, you know, what do they do? What's their schedule look like? And it's very comparable to this. It truly is. You know, we are, academia is what we do. Not to say that everything else doesn't factor in. We're very prideful in what, whether it's show choir or athletics, and those are all things we need to factor in. And the teachers will be the first to tell you that, even, you know, talking to the GES teachers. Absolutely. They understand that. So, it's not a matter of we and they, us and them. We need to get away from that. It's about our kids. And I know you wouldn't be here if you weren't passionate about that. So, it's really, what can we do to accommodate the situation that we have at hand? You know, brought in the athletic director. You know, Dusty, what does this look like? Athletics is an important part of what we do. You know what, Doug? It looks like we could adjust a couple of our contracts. You know, some of our athletic teams, they go out and they get there an hour and a half before to start warming up. Okay, what if they left 45 minutes before it started warming up? You know, are we taking those things into consideration? Not trying to step on anybody's toes, not trying to upset anyone. It's trying to factor in all those variables to make them work. And when we start talking about... And then, sleeping patterns, you know? I talked with, and have done a lot of research, looking at that. We know that our younger students, my wife is a kindergarten teacher as well, God bless, you can have them. I was a middle school teacher. She said the same thing to me. But at the end of the day, we do know there's a difference in the development of these children at different stages of their life. We know that our younger kids are much more active in terms of engaging in those activities, our elementary students. We know that our adolescent students and our older adolescent students, I have three teenagers. The glares I get if I wake them up before 8 o'clock, let me tell you. But we do know that research supports this, and that is, they are more productive in the later mornings and afternoon. I mean, if you look... I mean, if you look at research studies, their most productive time is about 10 to 4. And we're not going to start at 10 and go to 4. We know we can't do those things. But are there minor adjustments that we can take into consideration when we do these types of things and have these types of discussions? I think there are. I think there is a middle ground to where we can come together. Change is always difficult. It is. I understand that. I know most of you do. But it is something that unless you throw that issue out there and have that discussion, you're not going to get resolution. Because it has been six years. And I think anybody that knows me well enough, I'm not one to kick the can down the road. I go home every night knowing there's a certain distribution of people that don't like me and those that do. You know, that's the role that I'm in. As a superintendent or leader of any organization, the day I make everyone happy with decisions I recommend is the day I do something wrong. It's not going to happen, and I can live with that. But kids are always my focal point, and I want to focus on that. So, when I submitted this to be put on the Board PAC, and it wasn't to say, this is the exact, this is where we're going, and this is the only way, it was to get the conversation started. I appreciate coming in and providing the feedback, absolutely. The feedback, because I know you're both, and I'm only saying, I know there are probably others here as well, passionate about our kids. And so, that's what I wanted to bring to the table. We knew that this would elicit some response, absolutely. We knew that. But now, what do we do? Well, I think it's take some of that feedback and data, try to massage that, go back in gym and talk a little bit more, and see how we can make it work. But at the end of the day, it is extremely important that we have our elementaries aligned. It truly is. I feel for, you know, like I said, so we were talking earlier, and those K-2, K-4 teachers, that's tough. And the more that they can collaborate, talk, and have those professional conversations, the residual effect on all of that is that it creates better students and better opportunities for our students. There's not one fix that's going to make it perfect, it's not. So, when, you know, I started having, talking with the board, I said, that's why I wanted this to be a discussion. Wanted those, and you've had that opportunity, to make very clear. What I liked about what both of you shared was that, you know, there's not some other angle out there. I thought you were very thorough in what you shared, I appreciate that. Thought you were very thorough. And now, we've got to find a way of working together, because at the end of the day, it's about our kids. And I've said this, and I'll say it publicly, whether or not you guys like me, at the end of the day, that's not what's important to me. What's important to me is that regardless of things that we talk about, we're doing what's best for kids. And it's difficult, because there's so much emotion wrapped up into it. You know, mom and pop, a bear, those are your kids, and I know you want what's best as well. So, I'll go back to this. When we look at these times, these, this was a starting point of conversation, to look at research, to look at feedback, to look at data, and say, to look at transportation, and athletics, and clubs, and afterkitter, we get that. I've heard, you know, what are we going to do? My older child watches my younger child. I've had the opposite, where I've said to somebody, that's great. I have my older child now that can see my younger son or daughter off in the morning. So, you know, it's a double-edged sword. There's two sides to every coin, we understand that. It's taking the data, the information, and trying to come up with a solution, and not necessarily as perfect for any one particular family, but that overall is, from a consensus standpoint, is going to benefit our kids. So, I know I elaborated a little bit, probably longer than what that little statement was right there, but I want you to understand, there's no knee-jerk reaction. We're all passionate about this, we want to do what's best, and I truly believe, at the end of the day, we'll have a solution that will be a good solution, so that we can accommodate both of the concerns, or all three or four of the concerns that are out there. So, I wanted to share that with the board, because they've also received feedback. I think you got an email today, didn't you?
And it wasn't about sports.
No. That's, you know, that's what Mr. Seren said, it wasn't just about sports.
So, what is our, one thing we learned, Michelle, is up there where it says type, if it says action, that means we're going to vote on it. I made that mistake early on in my speeches. So, but we, I think the team knows we're probably here to discuss, we're not here to vote on something that happened and run out of that.
If I can speak, part of my misunderstanding was that the teachers that commented on social media, the tone was that this was a decided decision. And that's what my-
That's what I was saying.
And so, for, I know I can't speak for the board, but these are just facts, Board Docs is a place, just for the record, that anyone can go and check. So, I'm not picking on you, I'm just saying, it was a key learning for me.
This is my first board meeting, so this is learning experience for me, so, thank you.
Couple of questions I have is, when do we have to decide this so that folks like Jim can get everything? Like, is this a month away, three months away?
I don't think it's a month away. I think it's something we have to decide relatively quick. And if we do have, you know, we'll talk with our administrative team, we get parent feedback, we, you know, we consider those things. And so, I wanted to bring it to the forefront now, because it is a decision that we'd like to make relatively soon.
And how do we get the community to give us feedback as to what to change this to?
Well, I think-
Is there a way to ask for that?
Well, I do think you need to be careful. I'll just say, you know, personally, from an educator's standpoint, one of the things that I'm hired is to make those decisions. As administrator, that's what we are hired to do. You know, it's like when we go out, and parent feedback is extremely important, and we do get that, probably more so than we ever have, with emails, phones, social media, we constantly get feedback on things. And I think that's extremely important. But at the end of the day, we do use our data, we do use our resources to make those types of decisions moving forward.
I'm sorry, Doug. I just have a quick question, maybe it's more for Jim. If I look at the old scheduled times, I see three schools, independent of primary or high school, that start at 7:50 a.m. In the new proposal, I see three schools that start at 7:50 a.m., and then nothing starts until 8:30. I'm just curious, in the current system, we have a school that starts at 8:05. Is that system broken? My question is, if we have three schools that start at 7:50, is it not practical to have a fourth school start at 8:05 via transportation? The gap has widened.
It really isn't. Right now, we have two elementaries that start at 7:50, and we have GIS that starts at 7:50.
Right.
Basically, have a high school bus that's able to do GIS and high school in most cases. We start splitting those up, having all three boundary schools going at the same time, if they all go at 7:50. We basically need all of those buses then to run all three non-boundary schools. The elementary boundaries are very small compared to the overall district. When high school, middle school, intermediate, those are all three non-boundary schools. So, we really need all of those buses to run at the same time to pick up those students.
So, if all the elementary schools run at 7:50, the earliest the next school can start is 8:29? I'm understanding that correctly?
Forty minutes. Yeah, 40 minutes is the absolute minimum that we could use to drop off students, go pick up other students, and get back to school. Forty minutes is a minimum, that's why these times are 40 minutes apart, essentially. We could widen them, but we couldn't shorten them. That's correct.
And the driver of this is to get the three elementary schools on the same schedule?
That's a big argument.
The driver of this change is to get the three elementary schools on the same-
That's what brought the issue to like this.
We actually had, I think, four scenarios of how we might align the different schools. But as Dr. Wood said, having balance and getting the elementaries all aligned, you couldn't accomplish all of them at the same time.
Well, and that's part of it. And that's what, you know, probably should have never just put the times on there, but for transparency's sake, wanted to do it as a starting point, you know? That's what, you know, whether you like it or not, you're going to get information. And, you know, can we massage those or look at them? Yeah, we're going to have a conversation after this and talk a little bit more about what that looks like. But at the end of the day, it was to get it out there for conversational purposes. That's really, really what it was.
I had an occasion to learn a couple interesting facts. I guess way back in Glenwood Titan history, schedule, I don't know if it was 15 years back or 20 years back, the current proposed high school times, start and finish times are comparable to what existed like 15 or 20 years ago, and it all worked out okay. So, I thought it was interesting that, in fact, this has been tried before, and it was manageable, it was workable, et cetera. And then, the next thing, I'm not an educator by training, but if there's one thing I've learned about this industry and profession, more so than other areas, is that collaboration and brainstorming and discussion and asking for help from another teacher in a different school is really important. I mean, what I studied was, I sit at my desk by myself, and I do problems by myself, and it, you know, you look at the back of the book, and it's either right or it's wrong, and then you move on to the next problem. So, I think personally, this is really important for the elementary school teachers to give back and collaborate with one another, all elementary school teachers.
And that's not occurring now?
No. No, because it's because of the busing and the differences in start time of the schools.
So, again, I ask, what collaboration tools and technology have been looked at? I'm an academic manager for a theater company. We use tools. I have colleagues who are across the United States and in other countries. We collaborate using technology. We don't have face-to-face meetings.
So, our understanding from the negotiations is where this came up first for me, is it isn't that they're somewhere else, it's that they can't get there because they're watching students, they can't be in any kind of meeting. Is that fair?
Correct.
Because they're watching kids waiting on a bus.
What's happening on the SIF days? There are no buses and no kids on SIF days?
Yeah, they have collaborate, yeah, they do. Professional development occurs then. It takes a lot. It truly does. Well, for the PLCs, for the professional learning communities, they do sit down and collaborate on those days. We do technology-
People that don't know education, that's what they want to know.
Right.
I mean, I've been around for 25 years in education as well. I mean, I'm not new to the game either. But that's what people who don't know want to know. And to be transparent and to be fully out there informing people, that's what people are asking, that's what people want to know more about. Because there's a disconnect between, well, it's the buses and it's collaboration. You've got to connect those two. Because what people are hearing, what people are hearing is, is we want to be out at the same time as the other teachers. We want to end our day at the same. This is what people are hearing. I'm telling you what-
No, I appreciate, no, I appreciate the feedback.
So, that's what it looks like to a fair number of people. So, if you want to, you need to explain, if you want, if you really want the community to buy into this and to support this, there needs to be a connection between transportation and buses, and getting out at the same time as the other buildings, and collaboration. Because on the face, those two don't connect. So, you've got to find a way to- I've got some data, sharing that with people. You want this now? Yes.
Sure. No, I tell you-
I want to bring it back to students. Student safety was our first concern, why GES teachers brought this up. We had students sitting in the hallway for a half hour after school. We tried to sit them in the gym, we tried to sit them in the cafeteria. Our classrooms ended up in the hallway. That's a huge fire and, you know-
Safety.
-safety issue. So, then we switched it back to 8:40. So, now they're in the morning waiting. They come to school just as early as all the other schools, but they're just waiting in the cafeteria. Some of them wait on the bus for a half hour, breathing in those bus fumes. It's the student safety for us.
You're also, though, adding a safety incident by having now more elementary school students waiting in the early hours for their school buses.
So, if I look at this schedule, you have the elementary schools, which are boundary, and they're small in comparison to the non-boundary schools that are only running at the same time now, bus-wise, so you will not need more buses, more bus drivers for this time change, because you are going to be running the intermediate, the middle school, and the high school at the same time?
No, ma'am. We would most likely be able to run intermediate and middle school students together in a lot of areas.
So, 4th and 8th graders will be riding buses together and dropping off?
Possible. And possibly middle school and high school, more age-appropriate together, rather than K-12 or K-4 and 7th and 8th.
So, then those kids then would be on the bus longer, because they'd have to drop at the middle school and/or the high school, and then travel to the next building?
Probably not, because routes wouldn't be necessarily any longer. So, some of them, I wouldn't anticipate that. We haven't done routes, but I wouldn't anticipate anybody would be on there any longer, especially with GIS and GMS together. I mean, they're right a lot apart.
Right.
So, I wouldn't anticipate that.
So, my concern that I had looked at this with the GIS and GMS, starting at the same time, was the traffic concern. I understand that there is a, you know, this is all about the students, but it's also about the community. And if you've ever driven your kids to school at GIS or GMS, at either pickup or drop-off, it's a nightmare. No one does 20 miles an hour there. It is difficult to cross-traffic there. And if you also are having next year, a high school student that would have to drop off their sibling at GIS or GMS and then go to the high school, it is going to be a traffic nightmare there with this time, for students and community.
Along those lines, I know-
How do you do that this time?
I know what you're getting at, but we talked a couple years ago about, I don't even know who to ask. We talked about adding a lane there that we would have to talk to the city about, and then we talked that, no, that's a county road, and be in the five-year plan. Have we ever submitted to add, have we ever submitted to add that lane? Like, we can't add the lane until we submit. And who would do that?
We had some, we did have some conversations with the county, but they would only do it if, I mean, if we paid for it. They won't do it with their budget, because it's our issue. I know their long-range plan included adding a light at the intersection there at Lakewood Drive, which would help alleviate a lot of that. But it was their long-range plan, like a 10-year plan, five years ago. Where that's at in their budget, I can't speak to that, but I know that's, that was on their long-range plan to consider a light there at Lakewood Drive.
Well, can we press Dr. Wood on trying to get a light there? Because that would help somewhat.
Nobody likes lights.
Get around about. No.
I mean-
No, and also understand, I mean, and like I said, throwing the times out there is simply a model to go from. It's a discussion item. I know people get excited about it, and I understand that, I do. But it's good, because it generates discussion, and that's what we wanted to have happen out of this, so that we can come up with a resolution. You know, we'll take the data and information we got, we'll talk about transportation. But, you know, back to teachers and professional collaboration and those things, extremely important, because now, you know, it's not the old days where we simply sit and talk about, you know, the core content. We have days where we have our instructional technologists work with integrating technology into the classroom. I mean, there are a lot of different variables that our teachers work with during these times. So, it is valuable. The time is valuable. It's a matter of trying to manage it the best we can, and making recommendations that will accommodate some of what has been discussed here tonight, and accommodate what we envision for our kids in regards to having their teachers have that opportunity, so.
In terms of potential options, Jim, just to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, if all three elementary schools start at the same time, the other three schools have to run 40 minutes before, 40 minutes after to make that work. Is that accurate?
Uh, yeah. Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Hey, Jim, how much of your capacity on your buses have been used? Are they full to the rim with people?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we don't have an option of all those people that are dropping kids off to ride the bus?
Well, if they all rode the bus, we'd have.
We need a lot more buses.
Yeah, we, yeah. I mean, they're, you can ask about any of the parents that are in here, or any of the teachers that are in here, the buses are full. I mean, we've got a few that, you know, have some capacity. Generally speaking, there are high school buses later in the year as students start getting their driver's license. Sometimes during particular sports seasons, especially in the spring, we've got a lot of students that participate, so buses aren't as full. But we have them assigned to buses, because they, you know, when they get rained out or whatever, they do end up riding the buses. So we have to have room for them. We've got, I'm going to say we have probably 80, 85% of our buses are beyond 55 students.
It seems like the logistics are figured out, then. If the goal is to get all the elementary schools at the same time, there, we have two decisions. Do the older kids start before or after them? And if so, at what time of day do those occur? I mean, there's no other options beyond that. So those are the only things left to discuss or to have opinions on.
Any other discussion? I just want to say something. I don't, if any of you have been around me very long, I've got one comment I keep bringing up, and I know these guys have heard it. There's a lot of moving parts here. We've got to figure out a way that we can make everybody comfortable and focus on our kids. We've got a lot of bright, passionate people in this district. We'll figure out a way. We've been growing forever. I've been in this district for 47 years. And we've added schools, we've added routes, we've added neighborhoods, we've added buses, we've added, and we keep figuring a way to make it work. So this meeting was for that purpose, to find out a way that we can all come together and make this happen. Because we're going to keep growing. Okay? So thanks for coming, thanks for your input. If you've got some advice or some feedback or something that you garnered from tonight, feel free to reach out to us. We're all available by email. The administration wants to make this work. Thank you. Moving on, future board meeting dates. Have they got any? If they want to add any of these. We have May 24th, we're going to have interviews to fill our seventh position on the board. We have four candidates we're going to interview. Then we're going to seat that person on June 7th. In between there, we have 26th, we have end-of-the-year staff breakfast, retirees recognition. And then we have, we got graduation in there somewhere.
Yeah, I'm going to speak about that next to tonight.
Okay. Regular board meetings, June 20th. Have they got any others that want to throw in there?
Last month, we said we were going to add directors' reports to the list of meetings. And I thought after we got done, or after you got done with the change in school times, you could give us a list.
I get to work on that, yes.
Oh, that is great. One of the things that I wanted to ask about is, in the board policy, Dr. Wood, the board annually hears an update on curriculum and instruction. And could that occur?
Yeah, we are. Actually, we've got that. What we're going to do is, we've got our BALTCH DNA, instructional DNA presentation that we want to give.
Yeah, right.
And that align with, so.
Okay, so that'll be good sometime.
Our instructional coach, our instructional leadership team devote a lot of time to that, so, yes.
Okay, so that would be great. We could hear that, listen to it, study it.
When do we think we're going to put that schedule on the agenda? Will it be on the seventh meeting?
Which schedule?
The time changes.
Oh, I wouldn't put a date right now.
I'm just thinking of my schedule, and if we want to do it in less than a month, then we're going to need to get it on schedule.
Jim, did you want to touch on graduation? Yeah, just make my official invitation to all of you to participate in graduation with us. June 3rd, 8 o'clock downtown Prairie Capital Center. I think I'll just plan on you being there unless you email me, how's that? And then we'll have the stage set up properly, and we'll have you down there. Now, I know I ask you each year to kind of be mindful of how many kids you want to give a phone to. This'll be my last year, I'd bother Greg, obviously your daughter, I'd ask that if you can hold yourself back, I'd like to do all of them. So.
Do it offstage.
Be there around 7:45, if you would please. We should be ready to roll. Again, just let me know if you don't plan on being there, otherwise you cannot. Okay? Thank you. Any others?
What do you got there? So an update for the board. Remember last month, I talked about the possible memorandum from Ben Schworm at IASB? We have met, and he came up with a couple, three different possible resolutions for this technology exception. And he just sent it to me today, so obviously I couldn't get it on the agenda. But in honor of transparency, I want everybody to know, we're probably going to have to do it before the next regular meeting, which means, I'm just saying, we're going to have to do it the 7th or the 10th or whenever, but for transparency's sake. Probably nobody cares. But just throwing it out there.
Okay, any other dates? I want to, I want to mention a date that's not a board meeting date, but we have a dedication on the 29th, I believe it's Monday, Memorial Day. There's a banner program going to start up here in the Chatham community to recognize graduates that are serving in the military. And the Village of Chatham has volunteered to put up all the banners, and the banners are already paid for. And we're going to recognize the class of 2016 first. On that day, there'll be a dedication. I believe the show choir is going to be there to perform, and then the Memorial Day service and festivities will go on as planned at 10 with the village. So you're all welcome. Get the word out, and then next year, we'll go with the class of 2017 after they graduate. So it's a great program. Other communities are doing it. We're going to start it here in Chatham, and it was brought about by a mother of a 2016 graduate, and cooperation of the village and a lot of local sponsors. I think we're going to get it off the ground, so. Other than that, anybody got anything they want to address the school board on tonight, on any topic? Doesn't have to be on the agenda. Now's the time to talk to us. Nope? Okay. I need them. A motion to adjourn. Got a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thanks, guys.